This October 20, 2025, meeting of the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees to order. First item on the agenda, additions, changes to the agenda. Does anyone have additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to the next item, public comment, seeing no one in the gallery, moving on to the next item of approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August and our attendees from August? Scott Clemens, Brandy, Scott Kramer, Stephanie, we have three of the four here in attendance, so we do have a quorum.
I would move to approve the minutes for August.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, it is approved. Do I have a motion to approve minutes for September? September's attendees were Cara, Angela, Brandy, and myself, so we have a quorum there as well. Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the September minutes.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, September is approved. Moving on to the next item, do we not have staff?
We did not. I did not invite, it was Jen for this month, and she just did one not that long ago on the scheduling, so I decided that she didn't need to have to be here tonight.
Okay, with no staff in attendance, we will move on to the next item, item five, the library director report.
All right, so budget-wise, we are just, we're doing really well. We're actually pretty pleased with especially the part-time levels. We are looking at just strategically how we're, how we're scheduling, especially with part-timers, just making sure that we're covered. The staff is just going so many different directions a lot of the time that we're wanting to be sure we have enough at all times. I will be looking, just as an aside, at requesting some extra additional hours for part-time staffing. I don't know that that's going to, we'll see how things go. It's a tight budget year for the city, so I have talked a little bit with Ryan about it, but I'll probably request what would be the equivalent of two more part-time positions, which is 20 more hours. A lot of our part-timers work a couple of different jobs that they may or may not be able to add, so we may end up adding staff if we're able to get those hours, but we'll see where that goes. But personnel services is really in a good, in good shape. Total expenditures right now, you know, is 23%. We're at 25% for normal, so we're sitting well in all the areas for this time of year. So, does anybody have any questions?
Do we expect an impact from the situation with Baker &amp; Taylor?
Yes, that is on my list to talk a little bit about. I'll talk some, about some of the different things that we've been discussing here down the thing, but if you guys have any questions about the budget, I can keep going. All right, we did hire two library assistants. We initially had one that we were hiring and onboarding. We did have a second personnel situation, so we ended up hiring two, two people. Both of them have library experience, which has been nice. The first one, Megan Lapwich, she comes from Oxford and was their director before, so, and she has, she has three parts to her name, but Laps, which is her last name, is the second piece of that. But Megan, and then we have Angela Bowman is our latest one. She's a regular patron as well, and she, we just offered her a position, and I believe she started this last, this week while I was gone, either tonight or last Friday. So while I was out of town, which I'll tell you guys more about, the really cool event that I attended here shortly, too. So, also, so collection development, I'll talk to you guys about that a little bit. So Baker &amp; Taylor, which is our main big jobber, probably the, well, for sure the largest in the country and maybe even larger internationally, too, has announced its closure, which was a huge blow to libraries. So everyone's scrambling. All libraries are pretty much in the same boat. Some libraries are already, Ingram, who is the other big jobber for books, is not someone that we've used for quite some time, one of the, we haven't used them, but we do supplement already with Amazon. So Ama, Amazon swooped in, of course, and said, hey, we're going to do Amazon for libraries, you know, books for libraries. It's not, there are some concerns. They don't have great shipping. They toss everything into a box and there's some damaged stuff, and so we'll still continue to use them, but I don't know if they'll be the end-all for us. They had a big sale. Baker &amp; Taylor was supposed to be bought out by another jobber, and that fell through after they found out that Baker &amp; Taylor owed a lot of money to a lot of publishers. From my understanding, just on the backside, which I don't know a lot about this, but is that it was a fifth-generation business, and this later generation just didn't quite have the same philosophies and kind of lost their footing in it. They also had a big data breach a couple of years ago, which I think just never, they never recovered from it. So that, it was rough. We were having some poor service response already. It's just been increasing steadily. I think a lot of the people that even worked there weren't, didn't know until they knew what was going on, so that was unfortunate. We have been looking for new vendor. They did do, the State Library offered a kind of a meetup to talk about options, and Andrew's been kind of researching alternatives. Amazon is, like I said, they're developing a model right now. We were, we're seeing like 40% to 60% off materials from Amazon, which is really good. Baker &amp; Taylor, we typically were getting around, you know, anywhere between 20 and 45%. So Amazon actually was putting discounts on top of some of the publisher discounts. I don't know how long that'll last. And they are also looking at developing, the one thing with Baker &amp; Taylor that's going to be hard for us is that we got probably, I would say, two-thirds of our materials were came ready to show, to go on the shelves. Andrew just made the spine labels and they were ready to shell, to go. And they, the new, Ingram doesn't offer that service in the same way. Ingram also has minimum shipping requirements, which Am, which Baker &amp; Taylor did not, so you have to order so much or you have to pay. There's going to be some, definitely some, you know, just ways that we're going to have to learn to let go of things. I think Amazon is looking at what they could do with doing processing of materials, but I'm not sure how speedy that's going to be, or this is all new for them, so we will see. Processing saves us a ton of time and money, obviously, but we're just going to have to roll with what we have. So more to come on that.
That's probably why the discount is deeper, because they're not providing those services, or were those services additional cost?
Those services were an additional cost from Baker &amp; Taylor, but not it really in the, in the end, between the materials that we purchase, it paid off for us to have them processing them.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll see how, how things go. Right now, we'll just continue to, we'll have to process. There are a couple of small companies, micro, I think it's micro-marketing and then, or something in the library. Some of those will offer some processing, but they're also very small, and they're getting really, I mean, they're getting hit by, you know, thousands of libraries right now, including the bigs. And some, a couple of them have said, and I don't think, I don't know if Ingram was one, just said, we're focusing on the large libraries right now, which means the poor small libraries are harder hit yet. The bigs are getting, getting their business first. So there's a lot of, lot of moving parts to this. Andrew's keeping up on it pretty well, and I think he's been, we did put out a small statement, just really, Iowa City put out one from their director. We just put out a very general one, saying, please be patient as we work through this. So hopefully, we'll, we, I know he's processing, getting an Ingram account, which I found really, Ingram wanted to do a credit check on our library, which I found really interesting considering we're a municipality, but it was, we, had they worked through that, I think. We worked with our finance officer here, so he's like, I've never heard of that before, but okay, we'll see what we can do. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, if, I don't know if everyone noticed, last week, we had a sprinkler issue, that would, they had to do some repair work and ended up having to close for a couple hours on Tuesday morning. It ended up being under two hours. Two hours is what they said would be the max, and it was probably an hour and 15, 20 minutes, and they were done. So we were closed from eight to 10. We didn't open back, I opened back up about 9:30. I was the only one in the building. I just offered for everyone to work from home, because in the building, we had to walk through and check for smoke or any signs of fire every half hour in order to be in the building. So I told the staff to just work from home. I went in exactly for that reason, in case we were able to open early. And so I was able to open about a half hour early. I was just there by myself for a little bit, which was fine.
But you were the human smoke detector?
Yes, walking around, checking it out, which was fine. It was kind of fine to be in the building by myself for a little bit and get some work done. Interesting. But so, yeah, so I mean, I kind of split that into two. I didn't even mean to do that, but I, I made a separate one for the sprinkler system there, so you see that was there. And then I just got back last night at 1:00 AM from Citizen University's Civic Collaboratory in New York City. That is the first time I've ever gotten to go to that. That was the one that my friend nominated me, a colleague of mine, Shemichael Holman, nominated me for, and it's, I had to apply and fill out like a little, you know, send some information about my civic work. And it was really, really, I don't know, it was fantastic. I don't know how to describe it, because my husband was trying, he's like, what'd you get out of it? And I'm like, so much, but I don't even know how to tell you how much. So it's cross-sector, so it was several nonprofits, a couple, there was a librarian from New Orleans, and I were the only two libraries. And then there was some consultants there, there was some university folks there, and basically the, the main thing that they're looking at is civic engagement, civic collaboration, democracy building, and all the things in that realm. It was about 80 people, and the first night was just a dinner. They called it breaking bread, and we all came together, and the civic, or the Citizens University paid for all of us to be there. They paid for our hotel and our meal. And then I asked for a stipend for my flight, so I was able to get my flight paid for as well. And so we just, the first night was just really getting to know each other. It was actually, we just came in and each, there were just tables all over, and we got to pick a table and sit at a restaurant, and we just ate and talked. And then the next day was, in the morning was introductions and quick pitches for new people. Quick pitches were basically you could go around and say something you're working on, and then people can pick it up and say, oh, I could help you with that, kind of things, or I have an idea for that, how you might, you know, move that forward. And then they have three, what they call rotating credit club, where three people can apply to get a five-minute pitch. And then they can say, these are my three asks. So they might ask for, they're looking for funding, they're looking for introductions to certain groups of people, they're looking, you know, for feedback on this or that. And that piece was fascinating to listen to. And if you wanted to, which I did on all three, you could stand up and say, I commit to, and you could tell them what you would commit to do for them, to help them move their project forward. So it's just very collaborative. He, the guy that started it, he calls it a club. So I thought that was, he's like, we are a club, we do, we have traditions, and we come together and we support each other, and we do good things in the community. So that was really, it was just very uplifting to be there. And I already have two messages in my inbox from, emails from people that I met there, which I think is cool. One of them is a, is a community foundation director, and I think that will be really helpful, because I didn't, he can't give me money because he's in another state, but he said he would help me look for money for my, our restroom project to revamp our restrooms. So more to come on that, but he already has emailed me, so that's exciting. And then in the afternoon, we did what we, they called a power walk. We actually went out of the building. It was really just a decompression. It's a lot, it's very, it's high energy. The whole time you're there, it's like almost frenetic energy in that room. So we just all broke into groups of five, and we took walks around the neighborhood, around Lincoln Center. And it was fascinating. They had us use all of our senses, and we had specific things we had to look for and do, as far as like who's in the space, how are they using the space, you know, how are they, how do you appear in the space, what's your role in the space? It was, what smells are you seeing, what sights are you seeing? And we took a walk, my group, by, there was a projects right next to Lincoln Center on the west side, and the west wall of Lincoln Center has traditionally been closed off to people, and it's partly because that project is across the street. So we walked around over there, and then we came back, and they're doing, right now, working on a project called the West Project to take that wall away and make it more accessible for people. And one of the guys in that group grew up in that project. He's an attorney, and he runs a thing called Democracy Works, and he talked about growing up there and how there was a circus there, and they could see it from the projects that would light up. And they all got tickets from Lincoln Center to go to the circus. And then he said, but we didn't get to see the ballet, or the opera, or any of the theater that was happening just on the other side of that wall. And he goes, but then in fourth grade, I got, I was in the gifted and talented program, and they moved me to a school a mile and a half away, and then I got to go to all three of those. And it was just really like this, like chills moment, like wow. And he talked about giving access to kids and what that can do for them and their success. And he goes, I don't want to say that I'm a success story, but I am a success story, and it's because I had those opportunities through the gifted and talented. So that was pretty, pretty heady stuff to be involved in. And then we did receive an invitation to, from IREX, to go to Seattle in May to speak at the Building Together Conference. They, they put in a, we'll see if they get it or not. If they are accepted, we would speak with IREX, which is the International Research Exchange, the Urban Library Council, and with the Walmart Foundation. IREX will pay for it. I did, they asked me, and I, you have no idea how hard it was for me to not say yes, 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 I want to go. I said, I think Nick should go. This is his work, the work he's doing, so Nick Schuman is going to go if, if we're accepted. It's pretty exciting to be involved in that, the Walmart. I just said, make sure you really cultivate that relationship with the Walmart Foundation, because that's the big deal to be, and they are very interested in working with libraries right now, so I think that's really exciting. And then, so we are hosting an introduction. Johnson County Public Health is introducing two peer recovery coaches for people who are ready to look for, seek recovery options for addiction, and they're going to come and introduce themselves to us as connectors. So if we had people in the building who were seeking assistance, we can connect them with those folks. Just, I really love the collaboration we have with public health, so I wanted to share that. We are working on planning our second annual, annual quarter libraries training, which was what we did last year in Cedar Rapids that Scott was able to attend. This year, the Corvallis is going to host it. Part of it'll be in Corvallis Library and part of it at their Performing Arts Center, right there across the way, with a full group training. We are having Shemichael, my buddy Shemichael, come from, and talk about community engagement, connection in libraries and democracy. And then every library who works, you know, across the United States, we invited John Kraska. John is unable to attend, but Ashley is one of his coworkers, and she's fantastic. So she'll be presenting on, just kind of staff, frontline staffs, the ways they can advocate without getting themselves in trouble. You know, there's some hesitation and fear in advocating and trying to talk about censorship and things like that. So she'll be presenting on ways that they can do that from the front lines, and what's appropriate and what's not within our professional roles. And just the harm reduction vending machines, just bringing an update to that, they are going really well. We've had some really good feedback. I know that there was a group of younger moms at one point who were like talking about it, talking about having naloxone on hand, and all of them took one. And the other day, I had, I saw a woman like almost shopping in there, talking to someone. She's like, ooh, I need one of those, and I need some of that. We had, we had 142 items since we installed it. That was when I wrote this, at the beginning of October. We're seeing more and more use of it. Naloxone and Plan B have been the two most common items at our library so far. And then I just wanted to share, I attended the Librarians movie. They had a showing at the Bijou in Mount Vernon. If you get a chance to see that movie, they will be having it on PBS, I think, starting in the spring. I would highly recommend it. It's long. My husband said, it was maybe just a little too long for me. And I said, it was not one minute too long, it was perfect. They had a panel of librarians from Solon, Lisbon, and Ely, and they did just, and then Mount Vernon, the Mount Vernon Libraries, they did a fantastic job just talking. The community engagement, or the audience engagement was great. People were really interested and talking and asking a lot of great questions of them. So I would recommend it if you get a chance to view it, for sure. We are, Nick put in a, an inquiry with the public, or the producers, to see if we could get it to show at the Hy-Vee Center. So we'll see. There's a different couple of ways we might be able to do that, too. If it goes on the canopy, we could maybe show it that way as well. So one way or another, we're hoping to maybe show it, and we'll see what comes of it. Friends' book sale, we had a smaller book sale this time around. We made $467. It was actually 417, but one of our friends donated $50, so have a little extra there. So I guess that was for 77. Is that right? My brain's not mathing right now, but anyway, so around that amount of money, almost 500. This was the first time we've had a fall book sale, so we weren't sure what to expect. And we had, they had garage sales the weekend, too, and I heard they were a little bit slower. So I think as people realize, we'll see those, those sales pick up. And we did have somebody say that they're really pleased and happy that we had it, so that was great. And then we've got the staff reports, if anyone has any questions on those. I was pointing out Nick's grants, the Flight Path Grant, which is a bird identification grant, or bird watching grant, that's cool. And then the Internet Archives thing is going to be a really neat thing. And I will tell you that I just opened an email from him, and I didn't even read it, oh, because I was too excited. He applied for a very large grant through, I believe it's called Corsica, but it's through MIT, to work with young adults and emerging adults. It includes an AI, generative AI component, and some other things. I don't really know a lot about it yet. It sounds really cool, and we did not think we would get it. It's like $14,000, and apparently we got it.
Congratulations.
So that's very exciting. More to come on that. I'll have Nick write something up on what they're going to be doing. There is some, definitely between the staff, there's some staff who are not interested in working with AI and staff who are. And I've kind of just told them, oh, you know, we're going to, we have to be ready to educate people because it's coming. We're not stopping it by ignoring it. So we'll, we'll continue having those conversations. So Nick is going to be working mostly with adult, people over 18, and that's because the other staff did not want to be involved in the grant at this time. And I told them, just, I won't force Nick to not do it, and I won't force you to do it. So we're just, he'll, he'll work with some, like, college-age kids, which I think is good, and I want him to have an, I definitely want an educational piece to that AI, whether they want that or not. I think it's important for us to have that.
It's important to know the strengths and weaknesses and some of the guardrails that you should be.
Yeah. We were talking just a little bit about the weaknesses this weekend with some, my nephew is an attorney.
There are definitely some weaknesses.
Talking about some of the ways he's used it and where he's seen it fail really badly.
Oh, you mean like the people who've, who've had filings that have cited cases that didn't exist and then had the judge get mad at them?
There's no, I mean, judges that have had opinions that cited cases that didn't exist, so.
Woo!
Nice.
Yeah, I'm sure it's in every field.
Yeah.
My nephew's an attorney in New York, so I spent the weekend with him, and he, we were chatting, chatting around about it, and it's, he said, there's a lot of conversation right now.
I heard of, one of the big consulting companies had a, I think, six-figure consulting report, and there were large chunks of it that were AI and that were just false.
Oh.
It was.
I will not name them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was, yeah.
It's going to be fascinating. So I, I think the good thing is, is what libraries are able to do is help, hopefully help people use it ethically, you know, that we can provide some educational tools and understanding of, of use and not using it as a crutch, but rather as a launching point.
Right.
So.
I understand the desire to keep it for adults, but I do think it's extremely relevant for younger kids, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, my 11-year-old, yesterday, I asked him to crop a picture for a 4H project, and he's like, oh, this is the perfect thing for ChatGPT, Mom. It's the visual, like, I can pull it out and make it larger and change the background, and like, this is what AI is used for.
I don't even know how to do that.
And he like reformatted it and like added all this stuff, and I'm like, great. I don't know how to do that.
I don't know how to do it either.
They know how to do that, and teaching guardrails, I mean, whether it's school or library, is going to be really important.
Yeah. That's a good example for me to share with staff, I think, too. I think some of them have the sort of the environmental fears of it, which, you know, in the individual level, I don't think we, we're not going to stop individuals from using it, so teaching that use is important. There was one of the, just as an aside, one of the pitches this last week at this conference, or meeting, was taxation of AI use in the big companies.
Interesting.
It was fascinating, and he's actually talked to some senators, and I think there's some folks out there that are interested in picking up that ball, so we'll see what happens with that, but.
You're not talking about a tax on the sale of the service, you're talking about like punitive tax.
A use, a tax, a use, a usage tax.
Interesting.
I think is what he was talking about, for some of these bigger companies that are using it 24/7.
So the environmental impacts?
Mm-hmm. And then website, we're working on a new website with the city, so that's coming soon. It's moving, moving right along. Other than that, I think just the numbers continue to be impressive to me with the work that the staff are doing. And Andrew's, I thought Andrew's cumulative, his collection, his collection of element information is just always fascinating to me every month, but seeing the trends and things that have been happening and how we're bouncing back. Does anyone have any question on any of those?
Seeing no questions, move to the next item, item six, policy review.
All right. And the first, I, one is just the public participation procedures, which Scott actually asked me about, Kramer asked me about, and I realized since we wrote them back in a few years ago that we've never looked at them again to talk about whether they needed updating, so I included them here. I did not pass them through the staff in this case, but if anyone has, I didn't know if anyone had comments or suggestions for anything, changes in any of them. They're pretty solid. I had Grant help write them, so.
Yeah, I mean, they seem fair to the public and also kind of balancing that against, I mean, obviously you can't have 100 people talk for three minutes in a meeting, so there's, you know, a couple of, a couple of ways there to, to balance that and give, give people the opportunity to speak, but for less time, and then, you know, having that carryover if, if needed, so that people do still get their opportunity, may just be balanced against the opportunity of other citizens.
I agree. I thought it looked fine, and if there was ever a situation where there was ongoing consistent public requests for participation, we could always come back and revisit it and adjust if needed.
Okay.
I don't think we've ever had anyone.
We haven't.
That I can remember in any meeting.
Not unless they were invited, I don't think, or a kiddo, someone's kiddo. And then the meeting room policy. I did include both the original and the new. There's a lot in this one. This one's been, I've been hanging on to for this meeting, waiting for it to actually come up, so that I can get it up to date in our meeting room, or in our policy manual. This is, basically, most of the changes are to align with what the city's doing with their space use policy, and to make sure that, I mean, ours has some, obviously, some differences with being free and open to the public, but this just kind of makes it align on, be a little bit more consistent with that policy. And Grant has been over this a couple different times. They are, I don't even know if they have theirs passed yet, but he told me that this looked ready now. I mean, at least that it's covering what we needed to cover. So I don't know if anyone had questions. It's pretty, it's pretty crazy with the redlining, but.
It looks good. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting room policy?
Can I ask a question before we move?
Sure.
I noticed that there was a removal of not religious.
Yes.
Which I just was curious about that.
Grant says we can't. We can't, we're not allowed legally to tell people they can't do things, religious things in there.
Got it, okay. I was wondering if that was.
According to Iowa code, we are not allowed.
Okay, I was wondering if that was where that came from.
Yes, so that was, yeah, and I think, I mean, we do get asked occasionally about, I still would not like allow someone to have, this helps us also not allow someone to set up church for six months or a year or whatever by having this in place. And we don't, we also don't allow like private parties and things, so as long as it, it falls within that, I'm fine. You know, like the Chinese church uses our rooms occasionally to do some, you know, Bible study and things like that, and that's also fine. It was more like if they're having prayer groups constantly and things like that, we might, but it is not allowed for us to do that. And I had turned away some people in the past, but he said, no more. but he said, no more.
And then I was interested that the exception, the procedure for exceptions was also taken out of that, so exceptions may be made for meetings that have a positive impact on the economic development in North Liberty, so.
So he told, basically, he said that just opened, if I start saying that I'm going to randomly give exceptions to people, that just opens us up for a lot of issues.
Yeah, it does.
So that was basically, his advice was to take that out. That doesn't mean, in the way we, the way we have this written, I still think we're okay to do some of the things that we've done with that in the past, which are things like having people have open interviews and things like that, where people are able to get hired for jobs. If they're not selling, or, you know, passing money, or charging to attend, then we're still able to let them. So I think it's in the non-qualified meeting room use where we are able to kind of protect ourselves from still not allowing some of those things. I have, I mean, I get quite a few requests for things like birthday parties and things, and that we don't open up for, so.
Yeah, that was going to be my ask, with the non-commercial element, if that, if things like, and then it says job fairs, which the two of those seem to conflict a little, but that makes sense in terms of the not product sales and things like that, is the primary motivating factor. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting room policy? I would move to approve the meeting room policy. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Bring no nays. The meeting room policy is approved. Next item on the agenda is.
Did we need to approve the public participation procedures policy? I don't think so, because it's a procedure. I think we can just, in the, I'll update it to say that we reviewed it in this month.
Okay. Item seven is new business. Do we have any new business? With no business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Excellent.